We're recording and we're live.
The chair notes that the time is six oh eight P M. I call the zoning board of appeals meeting of August twenty eighth to order. My name is Everett Henry, Chair of Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We will begin with a roll call of the Z B A members. Mrs. Lovater?
Here.
Miss Mr. Offeld?
Here.
Miss Greenbaum?
Yeah.
And we are awaiting Mister Meadows. Um, the chair notes that a core is present. Also present tonight is um Miss Justin to Williams, planner for the town. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five extended through June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. The ability of the public bodies to meet in to meet in full remote or hybrid manner, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the media may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and the general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Special findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the closing of the hearing to file a decision for a variance. The board has a hundred days from date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the clerk, there is a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in the spirit court. After the appeal period, the permits must be recorded at the register date to take effect. Tonight's agenda is a public meeting in accordance with condition six of the special Z B A permit F Y twenty eighteen dash oh four. Review of the updated management plan on behalf of the property owner of Rajiv Jog, and this is for three twenty West Street. Also on the agenda tonight is Z B A F Y twenty twenty six dash oh two five eighty five Station Road. Request a special permit under section nine point two two to extend pre-existing non-conforming structure and increase a pre-existing non-conformant lot coverage for the modification of the front of the home to build an open portico for property located on map parcel twenty four B dash twenty R O and A R P outline residence and Alka Fire Recharge Protection Zoning Districts. We'll also approve, review and approve the minutes from our last meeting of August fourteen twenty twenty four five. I had an opportunity to rev- and we should start with the approval of minutes. I had an opportunity to review the minutes and I saw Mister Offeld's comments and I believe those um corrections were updated. Um, has the other members reviewed the minutes and are there any modifications to be made?
I have no modifications.
Mister Offeld, you're satisfied?
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
And I have no modifications. So to that end, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August fourteen twenty twenty five. Is there such a motion?
So.
It has been moved and second.
Happened.
Um, the vote occurs on the motion. Mrs. Lovater?
Aye.
Mister Offeld?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Apologize. Sorry.
You forgot.
That is okay, Mister Meadows. Thank you for being here. And the chair votes aye. And actually, in 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 deference to Mister Meadows, um let me just ask this question just in case. Um, we are voting on the median minutes um from August fourteenth. Do you have any modifications to be made?
Hmm, no.
No, thank you, Mister Meadows. Um, Mister Mister Meadows votes aye on approval of the minutes from August fourteen twenty twenty five, and the chair votes aye. The motion is adopted. The minutes have been approved. We will now go to our second agenda item, which is the public meeting um for Z B A special permit F F Y twenty eighteen dash oh four for three twenty West Street. Um, where there's a request to review the updated management plan pursuant to condition six of the permit, and the property now has a new owner, Rajiv Jog. I'm hoping I'm saying that right, Mister Jog, and if we may have um the petitioner appear, please.
Hi, I'm not sure if you're, are you looking for me, Jai Fuller, or for Rajiv Joke?
Who represents three twenty West Street for this petition?
I I did. I filed the application and the management plan on his behalf as the property manager.
Okay, you and Miss Fuller is your name?
Yeah, yes.
And can you can, Miss Fuller, can you please just identify yourself with your address for the record, please?
Sure, um my address is one eighty nine Long Plain Road, Leverett, Massachusetts, zero one zero five four.
Thank you. And I read your letter, and if I'm understanding correctly, you're only here asking for approval of the management plan.
Correct.
Um, what is the difference between this management plan and the prior management plans?
Um, there's a new landscaper. Um, it's grassroots landscaping. It used to be Four Seasons, I believe. Um, but the work that they do is the same. Um, and the what else is different? I mean, it's really that I took over management um from the previous management manager that was approved with the previous owner.
So the only difference is we have a new property manager and a new landscaping company?
The there's also a um parking plan that is different. It's still four cars, but the arrangement of the parking plan is different, and that was also already approved.
The parking plan was approved by?
I'm sorry, it it broke up a little bit. Um, I was able to meet um with, I'm blanking on his, a very lovely gentleman from the town who does um the codes, and he he came out and met me after to just make sure that everything was fine about the way we were parking.
Okay, and so that is, so the parking, um while you have a new parking plan, that's not part of tonight's request because that was already approved by the town, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, and in in the lighting section, you also added um language in there. Are there changes to the lights?
Well, um, I had to, I did a little bit of work on the lights. I mean, there were there was an old light that just needed a new fixture put in um with the lower unit, and so we did that. And but it's all downcasted lights that fall within the parameters. And no, I didn't. Other than that, I didn't install any new lights or change it.
And the the, I know you said you did some work on the light, and just to make sure I understand correctly, I think you said fixtures. So fixtures mean different type? Is it a different type of light versus a light bulb?
Yeah.
Can you clarify?
Well, the one that had been there was like recessed into this overhang above the pathway down to the the front door, or it's actually the back door that 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 the tenants use from the parking area. So that fixture was not functioning well, and so we just replaced it with the type that has the bulbs sort of on the outside so you can point them in the direction and the sort of coverage so that they're downcast. This was another thing that he checked up on. He just kind of walked the property and made sure that everything was to code.
And I I also see that it documented that some of these are motion censored. Um, were the motion censored um there prior to this petition?
Yes.
Okay. And I I don't think I have any additional questions. I'll open up to the panel for their questions um or raise any concerns that they may have.
Okay.
Are there any members of the panel who wish to ask any questions? Mister Offeld?
Yeah, I I'm looking at the conditions and this this application is responding to condition six of the original uh special permit. And it says new property ownership will be required to come with a new management plan at a public meeting. So that's what we're reviewing. But there's also reference in the conditions to a complaint response plan, and I but I'm I'm so my question is, is that handled in the management plan? It says specifically contact Ms. Fuller in case of complaint. And then, you know, co- contact information is provided, telephone, email, et cetera. So I I think we're all set on on that as well. Is that is that a good read of this?
Miss Fuller, there's a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, um as far as I understand, that is what, you know, what I needed to submit. If if something more is needed, I can do that.
So uh Mister Mister Offeld, do you have more or you?
Well said. That was my one thing. Yep.
Miss Greenbaum, any questions?
Yeah, my question is, since we don't have a copy of the lease, I would like to know what her policies are in the lease and have the tenants been informed about how many guests they can have and other party policies and what do you do about noise at one o'clock in the morning on Sunday, et cetera?
Yes, um I believe a while back I did submit a copy of the lease. Um, I can do that a again, but the the tenants are limited to to guests. They're also very limited with parking. And so um the lease indicates all of these things that after ten P M. They have to be quiet and so forth. It 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 indicates all of these guidelines, yes.
And what are they with that property?
I'm gonna, I'm pulling it up in my um files right now. The um the unfortunate thing I apologize is that um I am on my my phone right now. I thought that Rajiv was going to be here. I don't believe he made it to the meeting.
He is here.
I am here.
Oh, hi Rajiv.
Hi, um, and I can look it up for you if you want. Uh, when uh give me a minute, I I can look it up for you. So I believe all that is in the lease uh. Huh, where would it be? Uh, property management uh? The tenant leases? No, that's not here. Um. I know you emailed it to me, but not very long ago. I can search in my email, but I think I saved all the leases as well. Uh, give me a moment. Uh.
So in 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 fairness to um Mister Jog and Miss Fuller, um I I don't think we ask you for a lease, and we do appreciate that if you have to look for it. We are, however, um to satisfy um the board's concerns and answer the questions asked, that you submit that to Miss Williams, like full a full version of the lease to Miss Williams.
Okay.
Do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do, Miss Greenbaum.
I'm not satisfied with that answer. I I think we need to know what the party policies are.
For sure. Um.
I think that's part of the biggest part of management.
I I was able to, um let's see, is this what I'm looking for? Um, yes. Okay, I just pulled it up and here we are, just finding the clause. Um, maintain evidence or not. Party regulations, it's number sixteen on our lease. Regulations are necessary out of respect for your neighbors and the property. In order to avoid liability for property damage and lives of others, wise management of alcoholic beverages is essential. Permitting any minor to consume an alcoholic beverage can be traced to you and may lead to personal liability for grave injury to persons and property which is in any way connected with such negligence. Therefore, in interest of general welfare of residents and the management of the property, the following rules must be, um, sorry, I had to change pages here. Um, sorry, okay, the following rules must be adhered to for any sort of gathering. Violations of the regulations constitutes personal liability, a violation of your lease, and possible violation of the law. The number of guests at any gathering must not exceed building code safe occupancy levels. The presence of individuals at the residence in excess of the safe occupancy levels constitutes a violation of your lease. Kegs, there's another point in this lease that it specifies how many guests they are allowed to have, and I will um find that in just a moment. Kegs of any size are are banned from the residences and including the grounds. This is an Amherst bylaw of the property, and if placed there will be confiscate, they will be confiscated in addition to police action being taken. Music or entertainment shall be kept at reasonable levels at all times, and if audible outside of your residence after ten P M. In the evening will constitute a nuisance or an offensive use of your premises, and hence a violation of your lease regardless of any police action. If there is a gathering in any unit and property damage occurs in the vicinity of the residence, the tenants of the residence will be billed jointly and severally for all the damages I identifiable to that gathering. In the event of such damages, granters of all tenants under the terms of your lease will be notified and legal action may be may include action against all grantors. Um, management will keep a record of any gatherings, and such information will be available to public authorities for the purpose of identifying sources should any personal injury accidents arise as a result of such gatherings. Management will take legal steps to ensure that those illegal, I mean, sorry, for those legally responsible are held accountable for all damages caused by their actions or negligence. Um, and then I'm gonna find you where we speak about actual like guests. Um. There's another little clause that says uh residents will not make noise that can be heard in other rooms in common areas or outside the building between ten P M. and eight A M. Um, and then the guests should be right here. Thanks for your patience. Um. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's okay, Miss Fuller. Um, while while you look for your section, Miss Greenbaum, will you leave the yield the floor to Mrs. Silver for a question?
Uh, well, I would, but I I have, while she's looking, I would also like to know about overnight guests, how many and how often overnight guests are allowed. While she's searching that, she can search that also.
Overnight guests, for sure. Yes, I will.
Thank you. All right, I'll see the floor.
Thank you. Mrs. Lovater?
Were were all of the conditions that are being read to us now part of a previously approved management plan, which I believe, I think they were? And are any modifications being made to that? I'm I'm the reason that they are before us, I believe, is because of a change in ownership of the property. But if if this was previously approved and no changes are being made to it other than replacing the name of the property manager who would be called, then is hasn't this already been accepted?
So to answer your question, Mrs. Silver, I I'm inclined to agree with you because um that is my interpretation as well. Um, what Miss Fuller is reading from is actually not conditions, but um the lease, I I think Miss Greenbaum's question was what does the lease say about certain things because she believes that the lease should be part of the management plan? Um, but we're not here on, um quite frankly, um it is, if there's a change of ownership, the they're required to come before us with a new management plan. And nothing, to your point, nothing is changing other than the owner of the property and the new um landscapes nor robot company.
And replacement of a few light fixtures, which is probably part of routine maintenance anyway, if you put in a new light fixture. Uh, the only other question I had of the new owner or of somebody, is the new owner making any modifications at all to the property? Any improvements, any replacement, any additional bathrooms, anything?
And Mister Jog, who's the owner, is here with his hand up, and Mister Jog, you're allowed to speak.
Um, I agree with Mister Silver. This whole uh process here today was because of the change of ownership. We uh we did have a previous meeting about this, and the one thing that came up was the parking plan, which Miss Fuller has submitted, and uh someone from the town came and verified that. And then to answer Mister Silver's question, as of now, I have no plans on record or plan to make any changes to the property. I have considered uh putting in uh solar uh elect- you know, solar panels for electricity. So that might be the only thing that I can think of that might come before you again, and I imagine I would have to, I don't know if that it's something for the special permit or whether that would just be a routine thing as part of the town, uh you know, building permits. So that's a question I have.
So thank you for that, but Mister Silver's point was, in your current situation with this um time before us, nothing is changing. Um.
Okay, thank you.
So, Miss Miss Greenbaum, um in in the interest of making sure that you have what you need, that's why I asked Miss Fuller to email Miss Williams the lease so it can be disseminated to other members. That way you can see for yourself um on paper um as to what is on there. I understand that Miss Fuller is trying to answer your questions um to go in through and looking for things. Um, and I'll just yield the floor back to you to continue with um Miss Fuller.
No, I I was just wanting to know, I guess, if Miss Fuller managed it under the previous owner and whether um, you know, Mister Mister Jog has own property in Amherst or own property in a town with the high probability of students being his tenants. And if he's aware of those issues, that's basically what I wanted to know, whether this is a continuation of the same management company and um will it be managed the same way? That that's behind my answer. And I don't know whether this is a problem property or not because there was no information to that effect. So so basically, I guess my question is, Miss Fuller, are you new to this property or have you been doing it for a while?
I have been managing this property for a few years now. Um, since Rajiv Joke took it over, it was shortly after since he purchased it that he hired me, and I am aware of the regulations because there are so many students in the town of Amherst, and um it has not been a problem property. There has been no reports. Um, and we we have some students. I tend to be able to get a graduate students. I also have some, you know, uh it's right now, it's fifty fifty students to young adults that are, you know, fully um employed full time and stuff, so.
Thank you, which I appreciate that answer.
Sure, um we do, yes, and the the clause on in the lease, I'm I'm happy to send the whole lease, which is more thorough than what I'm seeing right now on my little phone screen, but there's um visitors or guests staying more than fourteen days in a calendar year are considered unauthorized occupants. Anyone not included on this lease, with the exception of after born or adopted children, must submit a rental application for approval to reside in the unit prior to residing in the unit. So we have that, and then the the clause with the number of guests that could, you know, come for a gathering or a party. The number in my mind is ten. And but I am not, I need to find it, and um I apologize, I'm not seeing it right now.
Thank you. I appreciate your looking.
No problem.
Mister Jog, I'm sorry, Miss Miss Greenbaum?
I just.
Oh, okay, I got it.
To respond to Miss Greenbaum, uh as far, I've owned the property since two thousand twenty two, and Miss Fuller has been my property manager shortly after I I took possession. And uh she's been very careful in in making sure that uh she screens the tenants, and to the best of my knowledge, there have been no complaints at all during my ownership. And then to the best of my knowledge, there have not been complaints prior to my ownership of uh this property. So I don't think it is in any way a a problem property of any kind.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, Mister Greenbaum, if we cut you, if you got cut off or you stopped speaking?
I'm 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 finished.
Okay, thank you. So, um, M- Miss Fuller and and Mister Jog, um, I I I I think it is appropriate that you still send us a copy of the lease um so we can attach it to um this management plan. Um, on on behalf of the board, I would also ask for a formal management plan. I saw what was submitted was the standard town application management plan. So I would, um, I think it makes sense, and we've done this in the past, where we get something more formal with um you know, your the address of the property, informa- contact information of the property manager, um the things that you articulated as what's covered under the management plan, and then, of course, um attach the lease to that as well.
I see. Okay.
Um, are there any other questions from any um members of the board? Miss, so to that end, um, I I would entertain, um, I I I think d- before I do that, do does the board feel comfortable, as is with the information that was presented, to approve um the management plan that is submitted without even waiting for it to be converted from what it is now, the standard town management plan? Or do you want to see a revised management plan? Mrs. Lovater?
Um, my understanding normally is that there is a time period from today until the plan is officially signed off on. If they get the formal management plan and the lease to to Ms. Williams in a timely manner prior to it going, this going into effect, then we would have an opportunity to review it, and in the event everything is in agreement with what has been represented, it could just go through. If if there is a significant difference that causes us concern, then we could not sign off on it and ask them to come back. I haven't heard anything tonight that causes me concern. There the changes in ownership, I have to. There the changes in ownership, I have to wonder slightly. If Mister Jog has owned this for the last three years, why are they just coming before us now? If a new owner has to submit a new management plan, but I don't act. I don't actually care that much, it's just I'm curious why it's taken that long, but. If everything is fine with this property and the documents agree with what's been represented, I'm comfortable voting on this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silver, Mr. Offeld.
I I concur with Mister Slaveter, I'd I'd be comfortable uh voting tonight and um. And and doing as Mister Slaveter suggested, checking the documents as they come in.
Mr. Meadows.
You've met muted. You're muted.
And if we could hear you, Mr. Meadows.
It it would have been amazing, but I'm sorry you couldn't hear me. So I'll just have to say that I agree with what everything you said.
And Ms. and Ms. Greenbaum.
I I'm fine with approving it tonight, I just think the other documents should be put on the file so that it's a complete file.
Thank you.
I'm happy with the town management plan, but the other information needs to be in the file. So I I would put that as sort of a condition of the approval of so. The file will be complete.
Understood, um Ms. Williams, see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Mister Joke, he's handed, had his hand up for a minute.
Oh, I did, I wanted to have the board members, I'm waiting before I go to Mister Jog, just in case he could add to what was being asked or said.
Okay, thank you.
And Mister Jog.
Um initially, to answer the, to address the question raised, uh initially, I had the previous owner's. Previous property manager continues the manager and the management plan was filed in October of twenty twenty-two. And then that property manager indicated that he was moving out of the area, so that's when uh Ms. Fuller uh was brought on. And as far as I know, there were, we resubmitted the same management plan again with really. If there were changes, there were probably clerical changes, was submitted in, I believe, October of twenty twenty-two. And the pushback at that time was about the parking plan, so my, I I, you know, obviously, you you are. Going to ask all these questions, but my understanding was all that was already done. And that only the parking and there was some issue about planting of rhododendrons, which Ms. Fuller has done. Was the only real outstanding issue, but will be, that's number one. Number two, if you have a plan on the town format, then. That should be the format that we use, I I don't understand whether, I mean, I have to now guess as to what you need as another plan. So I'm using the format provided by the town. I I I I don't understand what more you need if that's the format that is prescribed by the town.
Ms. Ms. Greenbaum, go ahead.
I think it's the complaint response form the people are seeking. That that's somehow or other Mister Jog. Paperwork got lost between all of the new employees and and the re- and the retirement of the old employees, sometimes, I guess the paper. Is mishandled or lost on the website, who knows, but but it would. I think if there is such a thing, you could fill it out and refile it so that it can be in a place where the current employees know where it is. It shouldn't be a big deal because it's all online to just fill out the complaint response form. So that that official formal document is on the file with the lease. I think that's what people are asking for because it hasn't been found. Even it may exist, but nobody knows where.
Well, I will refer you to the minutes of the twenty twenty-two November tenth ZBA meeting chaired by Mister Steve Judge. Uh Mister Judge inquired if there were any changes to the management plan and the answer was no. Uh Mister uh Huang was the current then manager was going to continue, all other conditions were unchanged. Motion was unanimously approved to transfer the special permit in the same manner as the previous transfer to Mister James Wong. To the new owner Rajiv Joe. Maureen inquired whether the permit would continue to be named in the name of the. Trans, I don't know what that means, trans, but Rob Mora indicated so. So what I'm saying is, uh it's not like I waited for three years, this this thing was approved on eleven ten twenty twenty-two.
Oh, sorry. I don't understand why you're expecting to just fill it out again, because it's. Apparently, we've had four planners at least in this position since twenty twenty-two. And stuff gets lost under the rug, I guess. I don't know why, why we don't have a copy of it, but I. I don't think it's a big deal to fill out the name and the phone number of of the party, you know, the. Complaint response form that everybody else has to fill out, it's not a big deal and, you know, we should have it.
So, Miss Mister Mister Jog, I'm sorry, I don't I don't want to get into the weeds here, um I I think. Just from prior conversation, um you potentially have the board's yes vote on this, so. Um we do understand um what you're saying, so let's just not get into the weeds of things.
We'll be happy to submit the. Land in the complete response forum back to you.
Um Mister Meadows, you had your hand up.
It it was only to say that have a motion and go forward, please.
Okay, so, um I would entertain a motion to approve the new management plan. On ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash oh four, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
He'll defeat me to it, go ahead.
Okay, the motion has been moved and second, um the vote occurs on the motion, Mr. Silver.
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum.
Aye.
Mister Meadows.
Aye.
Mister Offeld.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion is approved, the new management plan um. For special permit ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash oh four has been um approved. Did I see a hand raised just now?
It was mine, but don't worry about it, it's fine.
Okay, um I would also entertain a motion to close this public meeting on ZBA FY twenty eighteen. Dash oh four, um is there such a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And the vote occurs on the motion, the chair votes aye, Mister Meadows.
Aye.
Mrs. Silver.
Aye.
Mister Offeld.
Aye.
And Ms. Greenbaum.
Aye.
This public meeting on ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash oh four has been closed, um Ms. Fuller and Mister Jog. You do have your approval, um thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing, ZBA FY twenty twenty-six dash oh two. Five eighty-five Station Road, request a special permit under section nine point two two. To extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure and increase a pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage. For the modification of the front of the home to build an open portico. For property located on map parcel twenty-four B slash two zero. R O and A R P outline residence and aquifer recharge protection zoning districts. Um, who represents five eighty-five Station Road?
Hello, good evening, this is Madalina Defta, I'm the owner of the property.
Good evening, ma'am, um can you pronounce your last name once more?
It's Madalina Defta.
Miss Defta, Madalina Defta, and of course, I I know what your address is, but can you just stay for the record, please?
Five eight five Station Road, Amherst, uh zero one zero zero two.
Thank you, and. Just bear with me one second and while I look for what I'm looking for, there was a site visit and. Mrs. Silver, if you'd be so kind as to just recap our site visit for us.
Oh, fine, I'll be happy to. Uh the chair and I visited the site and toured the area where the proposed addition will go on. It does not go any closer to the existing property line. It is built on the front of the house and is a non-enclosed. Portico, I suppose, front porch to protect the entry door from the elements. It it is entirely on the front of the house. Uh extending towards the street, so it's not approaching any neighbor. And from what was explained to me and from reading all of the documents. This is before us because the existing footprint of the house. Is non-conforming uh in terms of the distance from the side property line. But the the proposed addition does not further encroach, it just goes on the front. And it, uh I think Mister, the chair and I both thought that this was a. A very reasonable and uh clean and not invasive addition to the house.
And I, thank you, Mrs. Silver, and I concur with everything um you just said. And what I was trying to find, just for the record, are the submissions for this application. And I see the application was submitted um August first um. Twenty twenty-five, and then, of course, there were images of the portico submitted as well with this. On um July thirty-first. Um Ms. Williams, am I missing any submissions or is that the submissions that we have?
Those are the submissions that we have.
Okay. Um, so, um having visited. Five eighty-five Station Road, um thank you, Ms. Madeline, for being there with us and understanding what. Um you're asking of us, I don't have any questions because um I fully understand the request, the need for the request. Um what would be done, so I would open it to um existing members who may have questions. For the applicant. Mister Offeld.
Uh I think I saw somewhere that the, when the house was originally built, it was in compliance with. Um setbacks, but the setbacks changed as zoning changed, is that correct?
I I I think that is correct, I I think if um. If if it wasn't the update in the zoning laws, we would not be here, um it's, that's literally why. Um the applicant has to be here today, yeah.
If I could just add an observation, I I just, I did a drive-by, some days later, I couldn't make it to the site visit. And I just note that the property uh, as you're facing the house, the property to the right, which would be. Um, the property that would be, uh where the where the setback uh is being, uh is not conforming at this point. The the house on that property, on the adjoining property, is set way back from the road, so uh it it's hard to imagine any. Concern uh from that property, from that house, anyway.
And and thank you for that, and I would make notes that there were no um public comments or submissions from abutters um in this regard either, yeah. Um I I will go to Ms. Madeline, I see that you have your hand up, but um I will go to Ms. Greenbaum in the event that she has questions for you. Um Ms. Greenbaum.
Yeah, I have two questions, one, I I gather, because I've seen this before on other properties. Um that that have come before the board, the the problem is the rain, is it, is it from the size of the eaves? The eaves being too narrow, okay, so then why is it not the problem on the north side that you have to address the issue?
It's because of the way the house is positioned and the way the 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 wind blows. We had a wooden, a brand-new wooden door installed. Two years ago and we moved and you should see it now, it looks like a fifty-year-old door, it's. Just how 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 the wind is uh is facing, I I wouldn't be able to tell you why that is. Um it's just that when you look from the front of the house, the overhang of the roof is very short. So basically, in the winter or whenever it rains and you open our door. Half the rain goes inside, so it's destroyed the front of our uh floor, it's destroyed our door, it's it's really destroying the house. Pretty much.
So my second question is, on the protocol that's over the door. Um which is the the pentament, I guess, uh the triangular pentament, is is that part of a a a. Water rooting system or is that just duck work too?
It's it's really primarily to protect our packages, to protect our entrance door. I did have the option to just put an overhang in front of our current door. Um which wouldn't require a special permit. Um but just for aesthetic purposes, at that point, it made more sense to uh have the porch extend. Throughout the entire front of the house, uh pretty much aligned with the length of the house, so. Um if you look in the picture currently that Ms. Williams is sharing, it's only the yellow part um of the. Porch construction that's dri- driven by non-conformity, so normally you need twenty-five feet zoning setback, whereas. If I were to build a porch over the entire length of the house, that would drive a non-conformity of about six feet, so. That's really the the parting question, if I had to do it strictly for functional reasons. I would just do it around the door, which would be well within the regular permitting.
My question, I'm sorry, my question is the triangular pentament that's that's. On on the roof line, the old.
Oh, that is, that is purely for aesthetic reasons.
Okay, I didn't know whether it was diverting the water, okay.
No, it's it's aesthetics.
Thank you.
Mrs. Silver.
Yes, now that I'm not reporting on the site visit and I can actually say something about the project itself. I think that this, the porti- the proposed portico is aesthetically absolutely appropriate. It means that there are thirty-nine square feet of violation at the one end of this portico. But it is in line with the existing violation or non-conformity, I don't mean not violation. Uh as the applicant noted, if they chopped six and a half feet off of the end of the portico. She wouldn't even have to be here, except she would then have a less attractive portico. So this is as non-invasive as I can possibly imagine. And I see no reason to uh to not build the full, the full-size. Proposed portico at all, I think this makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. Are there any more questions or any comments from? The board? And Ms. Madeline, do you have anything you want to add or?
Um now, I believe Mister Slaveter captured everything.
Thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to move the public hearing into a public meeting while keeping the public hearing. Open, um is there, it has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second, the vote occurs on the motion, Mr. Greenbaum.
Oh, oh, we're gonna, okay, aye.
And Mister Slaveter.
Aye.
Mister Offeld.
Aye.
Mister Meadows.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And ha- having gone to the site visits and reading the application as well as reviewing. Um the plan that was submitted, I am in complete agreement with um Mrs. Silver. That it does make sense to have it um align with the current non-conforming um portion that is there. Um I also would agree that doing it that way makes it more aesthetically pleasing um to the neighborhood and to gather butters. Which, and I would suggest that from not having any negative feedback from anyone from their butters would suggest that. From not having any negative feedback from anyone from their butters would suggest that, you know. There's no opposition, they're in line with that, and I see no issues with supporting this, and I would support it. Does Mister Offeld?
Uh I would, I would also support this, um I'm particularly persuaded by the fact that the house was built. When it was built, it was in compliance. With the setbacks and and. Um so it's it's, I shall I say grandfathered in um. So I think this is a, and and it's for for reasons that have been already stated, a very appropriate modification.
Thank you, Mister Offeld. Any comments from Mister Meadows or Miss Greenbaum?
No.
No. Um for the record, um the town departments have until Friday, September fifth to submit comments, however. The chair will note that there have been comments made from the fire department. And the fire department has no comments or concerns regarding the portico, addition to the front of five eighty-five Station Road. The town engineer, the applicants will need to use caution installing the foundations. Piers for the deck, their water service appears to enter through the front of the building. A schedule is provided and shared with the applicant, conservation. Based on a desktop analysis, this project appears to be outside of their jurisdiction. Um health inspection, um health inspectors compared the proposed plan with the four twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Title V inspection reports. And found the new construction will not be located over or otherwise impact components. Of onsite subsurface sewage disposal system, as there is no well on the property. To that end, I will um entertain a motion to. I to make findings, um. I will, I will go through some findings rather, and at which point, once we go through the findings. I will entertain a motion that we approve the special permit tonight. Um in lieu of waiting for that September fifth, given that we already have comments and does not anticipate any additional comments from town staff. So. We do have to make findings on this special permit, and we have to start with.
Point of order. Shouldn't we talk about conditions before you make findings?
I I I usually do the findings and then the conditions, um as the findings dictate if it's within the bylaws and then the conditions on approval after the.
Well, you're you're defining findings different from me, okay?
Yes. Okay, um. So. Three point two five oh, Aquafire Recharge Protection District, the property is in that district. Um three point two five one. Um. And three point two five two, the purpose of this district is to protect the public health by preventing contamination of the ground. And source water flown into the Aquafire of Lawrence Swamp Basin, which is the major water supply for the town. And I don't believe there's any concerns about that. Section three point two five five drainage. The addition of the portico increased the total proposed building coverage to nine point one percent. While the total lot coverage with addition is now seventeen point eight percent. While this is permitted, the board may wish to inquire how the applicant plans to address the recharge of precipitation to groundwater. And I believe. Um one of the conditions recommended was that there will be um gutters and. So I I think that should. Um. And answer that, and we can talk about that once we get to the conditions, um.
You really should be doing conditions first.
A- again, Mrs. Greenbaum, once we make a finding that this is within the bylaws, I think we talk about the conditions of what we want to. Before we approve it. Section three point two five seven oh lot coverage. Um and. This requirement is not applicable, building coverage. Three point two five seven one, the total building coverage for this property include the proposed portico is nine point one percent. Um subsection, um maximum building coverage for PRP zone land, less than twenty-five percent, this requirement is not applicable. Um three point two five eight oh. And. For all uses which require either a special permit or a site plan review in accordance with section three point three. The following shall be required as part of the application submission. Staff have recommended conditions to ensure compliance with these requirements that has been met. Three point two five eight five. Staff finds that the proposal is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the section of the following reasons. The additional will provide the front facade with relief from the elements. With the proper drainage off of the portico roof and portico landing, adequate recharge of precipitation to ground should not be a problem. The propos- section two of three point two eight five, the proposal does not negatively affect the adequacy. Of the exist sewage disposal and water service systems. Section three. The proposal will not have an adverse environmental impact on any watershed water course or water body in the ARP district during construction. Um the town engineer recommends the use of caution when installing the foundation piers for the deck. Since their water service appears to enter through the front of the building. Section four of three point two five eight five. The proposal will not adversely affect the quality and the quantity of the water in the Lawrence Swamp Basin. Article nine, nonconforming uses and structures. Nine point two oh, based on the definition above, staff finds a proposal constitutes a structural alteration, increasing the nonconformity of the building. Nine point two zero zero. Staff finds that this section does not apply. Nine point two zero one. Also does not apply. Nine point two two. Staff finds application to add the open portico to the pre-existing nonconforming structure to be in keeping with the character of the pre-existing nonconforming structure. Staff does not find that such an alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming building. Specific findings under ten point three eight. Ten point three eight oh and three eight one. Staff finds that the proposal to be suitable, located in the neighborhood, and is compatible with existing and other uses permitted by right in the same district at this time. Ten point three eight two, eight three, eight five and eight seven. Staff finds the proposal does not constitute a hazard to butters. Protecting against detrimental offensive uses, including air, water, pollution, flood and noise, the staff finds a proposal and precautions taken during construction. Will protect against detrimental uses on the site. Provides a convenient and safe vehicular pedestrian movement within the site. This is not applicable. Additional additionally, an operations and maintenance plan dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five was provided with the application. Section ten point three eight four is also not applicable. Ten point three eight six, also not applicable. Ten point three eight seven, not applicable to the proposal. Ten point three eight eight, not applicable to the proposal. Ten point three eight nine, the proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and or storage for sewage, refuse. Recyclables and other waste resulting from the uses permitted or permissible on the site and methods of drainage for surface water. Staff finds the installation of a gutter and downspout and the temporary erosion controls during construction are adequate methods of drainage for surface water. Ten point three nine zero is not applicable, ten point three nine one is not applicable. Ten point three nine two is not applicable. Ten point three nine three. Has to do with lighting and therefore not applicable to this proposal as there is no additional lighting proposed for the site. Ten point three nine four, the proposal avoids to the extent feasible. Impact on steep slopes, flood plains, scenic views, great changes in wetlands. This project is not found within designated flood zone or development will be located outside of the wetlands. Ten point three nine five is not applicable, ten point three nine six, also not applicable. Ten point three nine seven, also not applicable. And ten point three nine eight, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw. And the goals of the master plan, this proposal is keeping with the general purpose and the intent of the bylaw. So, based on that review, um we can make a finding that this. Petition is within the guidelines of the bylaws and we do have the authority to make um such findings. Um I would entertain a motion to. For a vote on. The findings um for this petition, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Miss Greenbaum, you are muted, but I see that you're speaking. You're still muted, Miss Greenbaum? I'm not sure if you can hear me, Miss Greenbaum, but you but you are muted.
I'm saying, I'm calling a point of order, we cannot vote on anything until we have talked about it. And and written the conditions.
We're not, we're not voting to approve the special permit, Miss Greenbaum, we are voting that it is within.
Asked it, how can we vote, we haven't, you read a list of things, we haven't discussed it, maybe there's something to discuss. But I think that we should. You've you've read what staff has said, we we may or may not agree with what staff has said, until we discuss it.
I I will.
We're doing things backwards, that's what I'm saying, I've done this for forty years.
Go ahead, Miss Greenbaum, what is that you'd like to discuss?
I think that the, yeah, everything is staff review. Now, sometimes, having had four different staff over at least the last four years. We may or may not agree with what the staff says until we discuss it. And I think that all a discussion in in a public meeting has to happen. Before we take any votes, do you agree? Because we haven't talked about it. And there are several things that are dependent on. That staff has suggested and staff has made possible conditions of approval, but I think we need to have a discussion before you call any votes.
This is your opportunity, ma'am, to discuss it, so what is it specifically you'd like to discuss?
I think that we need to go through all of the things you just read and 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 have. Staff has made recommendations, but the recommendations should not come from staff, they should come from the board. And it happened, I mean, it has happened enough over the years that I've been involved in zoning, that. The board doesn't always agree with what staff says, I don't know whether that's the case here or not, until we have a chance to discuss it, but all of the. The things that you read from the staff review should be that the board made that finding. And the board may want to alter some of the findings or may have something to say. And I think we need to have that opportunity to have a discussion before you call any votes, not railroad stuff through.
You you have been heard, Miss Greenbaum, if I I do have Mister Offeld's hand raised and then Mrs. Silver. Um Mister Offeld, do you have a question or comment?
The comment, I understood the process here to be that you're you're asking for a motion. Uh to approve the language that the that has been recommended by the staff. That that be used as our language for uh for each of these items. Um. And. Some motion is made, there's an opportunity for discussion of that motion, so. Is that not uh? A possibility to to make a motion and then discuss it?
That that is correct, Mister Offeld, there is, there is, that is correct, there is a dis. And there's a discussion on the motion, and Miss Greenbaum, if you disagree with anything the staff. Um that I read that the staff has highlighted as in compliance with the bylaws. I think that is the opportunity for you to say I disagree or not agree with that, um.
I I don't want to agree to anything until we've discussed it, that's all I'm saying.
Where where, where you you are getting the opportunity to to discuss it, Miss Greenbaum, but Mister Silver has his hand up and then we can come back to you.
I have read everything about this application, I agree with every staff recommendation, I think they are all reasonable. We are not here to discuss anything that happened in the previous forty years that may or may not have been appropriate. But we are here to review and pass judgment on this specific application. So I would like if we could move ahead with the motion. To um approve, at which point all motions are made, seconded and then discussed. So rather than debate. Uh whether we are failing to discuss. Let's actually discuss, and I would like to give the Chair a vote of confidence. I have noticed no railroading of any sort, and I don't think. That the Chair is trying to curtail discussion. Or give uh this consideration, anything other than the attention it it deserves. So I would like to proceed with the motion that Mister Offeld just referred to. And if there is discussion and there is specific disagreement with any of the staff recommendations. Then we can discuss that, I for one have no disagreement with any of it. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. And. So. A- a- again, Miss Greenbaum, just to clarify, we will take a vote on the findings, not a vote to approve the condition. And once the motion is made, there's discussion on the motion. If there's no discussion on the motion, then we vote to approve, and at that point, if you have objections to any of that. Then we will hear your objections.
Uh my only objection is that we usually don't do findings until the end, after you. Have everything else in order. After you've made the actual conditions, then you can make the finding. That's the way we've always done it. Fine, I don't. I'll just have to be adaptable and. Do it your way, I guess, because I'm being all voted, but to me, I would rather. Go through and make all the conditions and then you can make a finding that that, yeah, it works.
Mister Meadows?
I would like to agree with Mister Silver. And suggest that it's up to the Chair. As to what sequence we will do things in. Here, here.
Thank you, Mister Silver, so um to that end, I would entertain a motion. On. To prove the findings. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So seconded.
The motion has been moved in second, is there a discussion on the motion?
Well.
I I'll be, I'll go first, I'll be quick, I just would agree with Mister Slaveter, I I think the language used by the. By the staff is is just right for all of these items and would be happy to approve it. As our recommendation, rather than the staff review, it becomes our recommendation, or our finding, rather, our finding.
Mr. Greenbaum?
I think that we need to have some um a little bit of editing of the conditions as here before we can vote to approve it. I mean, in principle, I agree with the conditions, but I'm like looking at number one. Um this should be a a prior sentence, that the the portico will be built. Built according to the plans presented. And then the second sentence would be any changes, et cetera. And then in number two, where it says the town engineer has advised, that would not be part of the condition, but. But what is advising would be the condition.
Miss Miss Greenbaum, I'm I'm sorry, w- we're not voting on the conditions, we will. Voting on the conditions, we will, there will be an opportunity. For you to recommend your conditions, for us to discuss the conditions and add or remove conditions.
All right, while you're talking about the findings, there are several findings that relate to the conditions which we have not approved. Where she is suggesting, um, a couple of things about the gutters, et cetera. But a couple of things that, that she is suggesting we might wanna put in there, I think that, that we ought to approve what she is. Suggesting in formal language. In other words, I'm nitpicking over the, over the, the editing of this thing more than the content. And I can't, it's, it's, it's above where, where, um, there were several that, that we might wanna consider this gutter thing, well, well. That should not be, we might want to, but we ought to go back and, and, and do it. A couple of things that she's suggesting. That we might wanna put in there, and I'd start here, I can't read it, I'm like, I'm looking for it online and it's above the. Above the screen, but there are a couple of things there where staff is advising, and, and that should be formalized.
So, we, we, we will have. You, uh, rather, you, we will have the opportunity to go through the conditions and make sure that. If you think a condition is appropriate, it gets added and or removed.
No, but they're in the findings that you were asking, do we have comment about the font? And, and there are a couple of places where she said we might wanna do, we ought to go back and do. That, that's what I'm saying.
I think her comment was, we may wanna add these as conditions. And, and the findings, when, where I read through the findings, the comments are. Um, ZBA may want to consider adding these as conditions, and. You know, a- and I think it, it, and, and this adds to my point that. Going through the findings, um, if there are comments in there about conditions. We go through the findings and then discuss the conditions as recommended, whether we agree with them or not, and then come up with our own conditions or adopt their.
Well, is that what we're about to do? Is that what we're, am I just jumping the gun? Are we about to do that?
Yes, ma'am, you are. So we're about, we're, we're going to vote on these findings, and then we're gonna go to the conditions, discuss, add, modify, and remove. And then once everyone is in agreement, then we're gonna have a vote in order to approve or deny the permit.
Okay, so now you're planning to go back through the conditions and we, the, uh. The staff recommendations and we're gonna talk about them, each one.
We've never touched the conditions yet, we've.
No, I'm, I'm saying the staff review, we're gonna go through that, on the findings. That's your plan?
No, ma'am, we're not.
I don't know, uh, do what you wanna do, I, I don't understand.
Mister Silver?
Ms. Greenbaum has even admitted that she is nitpicking some of these conditions, nitpicking might. Sometimes be useful in the case of this application, I don't think it is. I agree with Mister Offeld that we should adopt the language of the staff. In as our own, it all makes sense, this, this proposed. Addition doesn't even have any new lighting, electrical plumbing, there's nothing. On this, it's very straightforward, and I think we should streamline this discussion as much as possible. And I am a little reluctant to say this, but. The chair has a vote of confidence from me on how you're handling this entire meeting, so. I encourage you to continue doing what you're doing, you're doing very well, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver, Mister Offeld?
I'm gonna add that I, I think it's, I, I hope it's understood that as staff prepares the final documents for this. And says that, and, and changes the staff review to the board finding on each of these items. That if there's language in the staff review that is specific to, the board might consider doing X, Y, Z. That that's removed, that is not part of the finding particularly, that's a recommendation related to that finding, but. Is later handled in the condition, so I think we can trust that staff will. Uh, um, figure that out, and I'll say, I'm, I'm the clerk of the board, so I'll help the staff do that if, if, if that's appropriate.
And, and, a- and I, and I think it makes sense, and I, and I appreciate what you're trying to say, Miss Greenbaum. But if every petition that comes before this board, we sit through, um. Eight to ten pages of findings and go through point by point to say, we agree, we disagree, we'll never approve any petitions, um, at all. And we're not, and to Mister Silver and Mister Offeld's point, um, you know. The staff's responsibility is to go through the bylaws with us to verify that. What we're doing conforms to the bylaws and the specific sections that they're in. And unless you can say to us right now that that staff recommendation is not in compliance with nine point two zeros or et cetera, et cetera. I, I'm suggesting that we move on.
I, I am just suggesting that I don't have problems here except with the wording, the things. That have already been pointed out, I don't have a problem here, but in the past, someto- sometimes. The staff is not necessarily correct, I don't have that problem here, but in the past, it has been. True that, that they don't know things that we know, or vice versa.
But you're delaying us.
I'm just saying now that, that, I don't wanna go into it, but I, I, I. I, I just say that, in this particular case, I don't have a problem with what. The staff is suggesting, except that we ought to discuss, let's discuss it and make sure that it's ours and not, not staff. Because staff is not always one hundred percent corrupt. That's not the case here, but in the, it could be.
Thank you, Miss Williams?
So as a point of procedure in the past, if anyone has ever recommended, and I think we did this during the last hearing. If there were changes or recommendations for changes to any of the findings. What usually happens is under the section that says staff review, I will generally. Implement a line that says the board approves or the board finds. And that is amended in real time, which is why I have this document open for everyone. So that this becomes, hold on, this becomes the, the, the edit that goes into the decision. Um, and it's not that we're making recommendations so much as we are going through. Or reviewing the bylaw and we're sharing what we have concluded, our interpretation of the bylaw during our review. And if there is a different consensus with the board. That is generally shared, usually shared, and then it's amended as they go through each of the sections, each of the findings. Um, it just so happens in this particular instance, no one has. Offered up any objections or modifications, everybody is expressing that they're in agreement, so. I just wanted to add that in for clarification because.
Well, I see, I, I, I didn't know how you operate, that's why I'm, I'm being obnoxious. Because I didn't know how this operated, because it's very different than any of your predecessors who have done it, so. I, I appreciate that you've done a very thorough job, and, um, it, it's just for me inside out, that's all. So I, I appreciate what you've done and I, I, I don't have a problem with it, I just, just with the. Anyway, I'm not going there, I've said it.
Thank you, the, the motion to approve the findings has been moved and seconded, there has been a discussion. Um, the vote occurs on the motion, Mister Offeld?
I.
Mrs. Silver?
I.
Mister Meadows?
I.
Miss Williams? I'm sorry, Miss Greenbaum.
I don't understand what I, are, are we voting on the, what are we voting on now? Is this the permit or is this just what, what we've just been discussing?
Just will have just been discussing, not the permit, the findings, just the findings.
And so, they will not be as added, they will not be necessarily as written here. I, I, I'm gonna abstain because I don't know what's going on.
Understood.
I wanna see the finished document before I vote, I'm, so I'm abstaining.
The chair votes aye, the, the motion passes, now, we will discuss the conditions. And then once we've gone through the conditions, I would entertain a motion to approve the conditions. Um, that the board has decided on, so. Um, are there any proposed conditions that the board deems necessary? Um, there are several proposed conditions, of course, we can add, alter, remove. Um, any of these conditions as we deem necessary for this petition. Are there any proposed conditions or any issues with the proposed conditions?
Well, the first one should begin with that it should be built according to the plans presented.
Miss Williams, can you share that with us in real time so we can see, um, so Mister Greenbaum can see the modification?
Sure, do you wanna propose specific language or is this going before condition number one?
The fir- very first sentence, if the, the, the project should be constructed according to the plans that are approved.
Okay.
Is everyone comfortable with, I'm, I'm sorry, Miss Williams, I don't know if you're typing or you're waiting for us?
I'm, I'm finished typing.
Okay, is everyone comfortable with current condition number two? The town engineer has advised the applicant to use caution install on the foundation pyres to the deck. And the sketch provided from a challenge should be given to the con- contractor prior. Do we need the first sentence or should it just be the sketch or flip those to the sketch? Um, must be provided pursuant to the talent engineer's, um, recommendation.
Well, I would put in there that regarding the, um. The, 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 I'd leave the part about the, uh, water service appears to enter through the front door. And, um. Begin the sentence with the water system appears to enter through the front door and everything in front of the. Or just take out the town engineer's advice and start with the applicant to use caution.
Hold, hold on one second, let's just see it the way that you suggested it the first time.
Mister Silver?
That change is not substantive, why don't we just leave it alone?
Well, because it's not a legal condition, I would say.
Yeah, I, if I just give them the sketch was, should be the condition, not the first sentence.
Well, I've already given them the sketch, um, and Miss Dufft can confirm whether or not she's given their. Contractor the sketch, but I can just take that out, hold on.
Well, we, we were provided the sketch indeed, and for clarification, the. Water does not enter through the front door, it is the front of the building, but it's actually to the side. Um, outside of the area we're actually going to be building, but that being said, Miss Williams did give me the sketch and. We are planning to share that with the contractor prior to any work being done.
Thank you for that, Mister Offeld, do you have your hand raised?
I do, um, I'm gonna go back, i- if we're done with number two. I'm, I'm happy with all the rest of them, I just have one point on number one. And this is a topic that came up last time, I think it is substantive. Uh, and it says in the second paragraph of number one. Any changes to the approved plans must be presented to the ZBA at a public meeting to to, to determine if the changes are significant. And I wonder if that's good process and if we might instead, um. Say that changes must be presented to the building commissioner to determine if they are significant. And let the building commissioner decide if they need to come back to the ZBA.
So, I actually.
If it is significant enough.
I actually had a discussion with the building commissioner about this, um. After we met the last time, and so what's happening here is basically it's. Already, it's outlining a process that already happens, so we, I think what's happening here, people are getting confused by the language, so I can change it. So that it just reads as though it's informing the applicant. That they know any changes will be presented to town staff. And if town staff deems the changes to be significant, then they have to appear before the ZBA to apply for a new special permit. Does that seem, okay, I'm seeing a lot of approval.
Yes, that's, I, I thank you, Mister Offeld, because yes, we dealt with something similar in the last, um, here and, and I think it's. It wasn't very clear, yeah.
Right.
Are there any other conditions, concerns about existing conditions, anything needs to be added and or removed? I see no responses, so I would entertain a motion. That we approve the conditions as edited by this board, um, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second, it has been moved, it has been moved and second, is there any discussion on the motion? With no discussion, the vote occurs, the chair votes aye, Mrs. Silver?
I.
Mister Meadows?
I.
Mister Offeld? And Miss Greenbaum?
I.
The motion has been. Approved, I will now entertain a motion to approve ZBA FY. I'm, I'm missing the number, um, um, five eighty-five Station Road. Um, for approval on ZBA FY twenty twenty-six dash O two. And this is to approve the special, um, permit with the findings and the conditions. Um, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It has been, it has been moved and second, is there any discussion on the motion? The vote occurs, um, Mrs. Silver?
I.
Mister Meadows?
I.
Miss Greenbaum?
I.
Mister Offeld?
I.
And the chair votes aye, ZBA FY twenty twenty-six dash O two five eighty-five Station Road special permit. Has been approved, um, Miss Madalena, congratulations and good luck on your protocol.
Thank you, I appreciate, um, the committee is taking the time today to debate this.
You're very welcome, and thank you for your patience. I will now entertain a motion to close the public, um, hearing and meeting. For ZBA FY twenty twenty-six dash O two five eighty-five Station Road. Is there such, it has been moved, is there a second?
Welcome.
It has been moved and second, the vote occurs on the motion, Mrs. Silver?
I.
Mister Offeld?
I.
Miss Greenbaum?
I.
Mister Meadows?
I.
And the chair votes aye, the hearing has been closed. As we do with each meeting, are there any public comments on anything not before? This ZBA tonight, do we even have an audience, Miss Williams?
We have an audience of one and I don't see them raising their hand. So that's a no.
The no.
No comments.
And then we can, with no co- with no public comment. Then are there any other business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours? then are there any other business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours?
I don't have anything.
And with nothing, we shall look ahead onto our calendar, Miss Williams?
Yes, one moment. Okay, can everyone see that? So coming up, we have sixty-five High Street on the eleventh of September. And our panel for that is a full panel of the full members. Um so Slovater, Meadows, Offeld, Henry and White. And then for the twenty-fifth, we do not have any petitions scheduled, um anybody coming in now would have to wait until October because they've missed the deadline for legal ads and just for the application deadline itself. Um so I was going to ask if the board wanted to vote to cancel that meeting on the twenty-fifth just because we wouldn't have any reason to meet. Um but that is our schedule as it stands at the moment.
Thank you, Miss Williams. I think that makes sense if there's nothing, I I mean, if we are without with if we're past the time standards, um then it makes sense that we didn't have that meeting since no one can put anything on nine twenty-five. Um so I would entertain a motion to cancel um prior scheduled meeting of nine twenty-five, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved and second, is there any discussion on the motion?
I will just note that I'm unavailable for that meeting any, for that date anyway, so uh this is very convenient. So I vote, I would approve this.
Thank you, Mister Offeld. Um the vote occurs on the motion, Miss Greenbaum? Mister Slovater? Mister Meadows? Mister Offeld? And the chair votes aye. The scheduled meeting for September twenty-fifth is officially canceled with no petitions pending and we are now outside the time standards for submission. To that end, it is um seven forty-one, I would entertain um, um, Mrs. Silver?
I have one comment to make, um this is on the, on September eleventh, we are scheduled to meet about High Street and there was a, an email circulated from Miss Williams about another site visit and I believe that the chair thought we should visit. I don't know what has changed, but I would just like to communicate, since we're not supposed to communicate outside of meetings, that I'm ambivalent about this, but Mister Chair, if you think we should go back, I will be happy to accompany you.
I I I'm I'm still trying to understand what, if any changes are there, and that's why I thought maybe if people had an opportunity to go and and I'm happy to go.
There's a parking, there's a parking change. From from the last time, that's the only thing I know of.
So, you know, it's it's time and if people don't need the time, I'm and Mister Slovater, if you have the time, I'm happy to go with you, I do want and see if there's something they want to add to the the applicant rather. Um but if it's also inconvenient for the applicant, Miss Williams, I don't wanna inconvenience them, because again, this came before came to us before, yeah.
I haven't brought it up with them, just.
I just wanted to make sure don't, wouldn't Mister Offeld wanna see the building? Since it was an issue before.
Thank you, M- Miss Greenbaum, uh I uh was asked if I needed to see it and I felt that the the uh plans that were available and and an outside visual inspection would be adequate. So I didn't feel the need for a site visit myself. Thank you.
And and I'm actually ambivalent about it, I'm just willing and I'm deferring to the chair because I sort of sense that he might be interested, that was the only reason, I don't, there's no compelling reason that I'm aware of.
There isn't, and I may just go the route of Mister Offeld and just drive there and see. Um if, again, if people are comfortable with the information that is already available, then no, we don't necessarily need to do something um that warrants everyone to coordinate schedules and with applicants, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, just to confirm, that's a no for the site visit? So the P A R, I'm gonna actually send that to you all um this evening, I think, or no, I'm gonna wait because I need to talk to one more person within town staff to clarify their notes, but it will be sent to you. If not tomorrow, then on Monday, you'll have it at least like a week before the actual hearing, so.
Don't forget, you don't work on Monday, so don't work on Monday.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for that reminder.
You're welcome.
Right, the chair just gave you the day off.
So, um if there are no additional topics, um I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. And it is a non debatable motion, is there such a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? It has been moved and second, the vote occurs on the motion, Mister Offeld? Mister Greenbaum? Mister Slovater? Mister Meadows? And the chair votes aye. Thank you all for being here and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend, everyone.